To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you.
I'll see whenever you're ready.
Martha Pace.
Here.
Amanda Grubler.
Here.
Kirsten Gumpson.
Here.
Willette Jones.
Here.
Calvin Lewis.
Here.
Matthew McRae.
Here.
Lekeah Walker.
Here.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to present the agenda as presented.
Second.
All in favor? Now we have the student, the student representative.
Good evening and almost good night. I apologize, I don't have a list of things, I forgot to get a list from my classmates before the end of the day. But recently, we had our international festival, which was run by the multicultural club in the high school. Today, that second half of the day, there were performances in the auditorium. The band performed, the choir performed, there were some dances. I know there was a staff group, or a group of staff, who did a performance. And then, following that, students had volunteered to create tables and booths with information and food and activities based around certain countries and cultures. And they were set up in the cafeteria, students walked around. And then there were games and such around in the hallways, and it was a great couple periods. So, big props to the multicultural club, they did a great job. Aside from that, AP tests are also wrapping up. Tomorrow is the AP bio test, which I will be taking. So, I apologize, but I will be leaving this meeting a little early to go study. We also had the National Honor Society induction. I think that was after the last meeting. That went very well. Dr. Pennyman, you were there.
Friday.
Oh, yeah, that was so, not too long ago. That went well. New inductees have been inducted, seniors got a nice send-off. Tennis sectionals just happened yesterday. Five tennis players went to sectionals at Shenandoah. And though we might not have won, we had a lot of fun. Yeah. And then, oh, student councils meet the board candidate night, went well. The public seemed to have responded well to that. And we look forward to holding it again in future years. And that is everything that I can think of right now. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Audit committee?
Yes, the audit committee met on May 9th. We reviewed the risk assessment from the internal auditor. We reviewed the comment letter from the external auditor and the district's corrective action plans for those. Recommended for board approval, and they are on the agenda this evening. We will be scheduling a follow-up in June, it has not been done yet, but we'll have it scheduled for the next board meeting.
Okay, thank you. Facilities?
Yes, so, some facilities updates. We had two public informational sessions, they were held April 29th and May 13th. We also had the energy performance kickoff meeting for the comprehensive energy audit that was held on April 25th with Energia, Johnson Controls, and John Sharkey, who I believe is, is he not here tonight? But he's been with us through and through. JCI is sending a contract to Dr. Pennyman for legal review. The performance, the performance, or excuse me, the, sorry, acronyms kind of got me, I wrote this one out. The power purchase agreement. Current contract is being reviewed by Energia and Johnson Controls. The bond will go out after the state ed approval, planning for the 25, 26 school year. The lighting audit was completed earlier this month on May 5th. The audit for the HVAC is scheduled for June 10th and June 11th. The water conservation survey is scheduled for tomorrow. And follow-up meetings for all parties will be held later this month on May 30th. The Wake Smart Energy Savings Kickoff Meeting, that took place on May 14th with the IT department, as well as the plug load controllers and computer management system. John Sharkey, Architectural Firm, he is working on a contract that will be sent to Dr. Pennyman for review that comes out of incidentals, that won't impact the general fund. Boilers, the FireEye controllers are to be replaced for the upcoming heating season, and that will, that applies to boiler number one. Over at MC Smith, the water meter replacement will take place at the end of the school year. That will require the water to be shut off. And so Tyler and the maintenance crew, they're working with Mr. Brenneman to find the best date to do that. New wireless microphones are installed in the press box at the turf field. That's in preparation for the upcoming graduation ceremonies and events. Spring sports is winding down, and we will be hosting the Petroni Conference Track Championship that will take place tomorrow. Custodial staff meetings will be held for summer cleaning. The end-of-year review for HVAC with Trane will be completed, or excuse me, was completed on May 14th. And next year's schedules for heating and cooling, that'll be uploaded into the software. Next year's preventive maintenance contracts are being reviewed by Tyler for controls and mechanical. And new outdoor air temp sensors are coming in, those have been ordered, and we're waiting for those to come in. And that is the facilities committee update.
Thank you. Policy committee.
All right, we did a lot of sort of detail-oriented work, we met today, in getting some things ready, looking at the eternity, attorney review. The ex officio student member of the board has been revised based on feedback from last meeting and is ready to go today. Some other things, we made some additional tweaks to after getting additional feedback, so we'll put them on next week's, next session's agenda. The promotion and retention policy, we got some feedback from staff around, so we made some changes there. The org chart needs transportation added to it, and then we'll be ready to go. So, those are things. We took a look also at the policy development and adoption. We finalized all the attorney review, and as well as the policy charter, so those will be ready to go at our next meeting as well. And big things kind of coming down the pipeline. Ms. Ferry is revamping some of the expense reimbursement to make sure that we are doing things the way we should be there. Dr. KT is looking at grading policy. We're continuing to look at the code of conduct work. And then, we'll tackle a whole bunch of things that are annual re-ops in our next policy meeting as well.
Thank you. Presentations, Smart School presentations.
Good evening, and I want to introduce myself for those people watching at home, or maybe in the room, who may not know who I am. My name is Ms. Rabinowitz, I'm the instructional technology manager. I oversee the technology department, and it gives me great pleasure this evening to present the Smart Schools Investment Plan. I'd like to also introduce my colleague Tyler Kritzman, who's our director of facilities, and he's going to be presenting with me, as long as our, along with our vendor partners, Joe Chicorelli from Core BTS, and Casey Sherman from Day Automation. So, just to give you some background. Well, first of all, everything we do is tied into the six keys for school improvement. And the Smart Schools Investment Plan is tied into all these things, and you'll see as we're going through it. So, first of all, we could not do any of this, or could have done any of this, without acknowledging the community and the staff. This has been in place for a couple of years, and it started with, I came in 2020, and our technology was really in rough shape, but we really needed to take place, take care of things like Chromebooks and devices and so forth. So, we started that, we convened the technology committee, we got everyone together, we created surveys, we worked with our BOSI's partners, we did assessments. And so, everyone was involved, everyone gave feedback. And what came out of it, after we took care of the Chromebooks and the servers and all of those pieces, we absolutely needed to upgrade our wireless, our security cameras, and other types of equipment, which you'll see in a little while. But I just think it's important to thank everybody, the board, the superintendent, district and building administration, teachers, because again, everyone was involved in this process, but it started a few years back. Okay. So, for those who may not know, and I did present in January, but it's been a few months, so I always like to level set. So, the Smart Schools Bond Act was approved by the New York State voters, not necessarily Hudson voters, but New York State voters authorized an issuance of $2 billion of general obligation bonds to finance technology in schools. The allocation for Hudson was $1,771,233. It was, again, it was a collaborative assessment, process, and so forth. When we got to the pieces which you're going to see today, we worked with the technology committee and the Smart Bond Committee, we had various vendors come in, do presentations, we had rubrics that we compared them to, and then, we decided and made recommendations of who we wanted to have present our technology. The focus areas of the Smart Bond, they give you five focus areas. What you'll see tonight is the high-tech security features and school connectivity. Those are the areas that we're presenting our Smart Bond on. Okay? I mentioned about the working committee and so forth. State Ed requires us to have a three-year technology plan. Most of you have seen our technology plan, believe it or not. It ends this year, and then we start a new three-year technology plan, and we'll be doing it all over again, surveying the students and the staff and the families, getting information of what we'd like to see moving forward with our technology. Other sources we used as part of this is, some of you may recall, we had an IT audit, and they gave us some recommendations, so feedback from the audit, the surveys, also the digital equity surveys, and the needs assessment from the IT department, as well as our BOSI's partners. Okay? So, in our plan, it's important to know, these are three of our goals, right? Provide instructional technology tools to the school community, provide professional development, ensure student proficiency. We have made a lot of progress in those areas, and we're continuing to do that. The area that we haven't made progress is what we're going to do right now, which is, we have a great network, but we really need to upgrade our wireless. Joe, how old would you say our wireless is? 10, 12 years old?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yes. So, it's, yeah. So, it's been pretty reliable, but again, it's aging, technology changes, you know, there's little blips, so that's one, and we're going to talk about it. The security camera system, we have many security cameras, but there are places we don't have them, and Tyler will talk about that shortly. The phone system, the phone system. Original, 30, 40 years old or higher, you know? And then, we're also going to talk about public announcements and the clocks. Okay? Again, must be aligned with the district technology plan, which is, it is. I won't read it to you, but it's aligned with goal four. And then, this, and it's going to be on our website as well, this is actually the Smart Schools Investment Plan. It's a draft, everything we're presenting about, the highlights and the goals, they're in here. I'm just showing you what the plan looks like, but in my presentation, in our presentation, you'll see those elements in there. But if you want to know what the Smart Schools Plan is, this is it. Okay. So, challenges, issues, features, and benefits, okay? Tyler, you want to come up as well? Okay, so I'll start with the first, the wireless upgrade. So, it's connected, remember I told you there was a focus area? So, the wireless upgrade is connected in state ed to school connectivity. Challenges, as we said, it's obsolete equipment, there's coverage gaps, performance issues. Not as bad, but it's getting there, and in time, it will get worse. So, by upgrading our wireless, we'll have improved speeds, increased density, it's going to be a cloud-based controller. And if the board has any questions either now or as we go through it, that's why we have our vendor partners here to answer those questions. And it's going to bolster the computerized testing. We just went through computerized testing, we did very well, you know? Right? But, you know, again, the wireless is old, so this will help with that, as well as, of course, impacting teaching and learning. Okay, I'll turn to Tyler.
Good evening. So, I'm Tyler Kritzman, for those of you who do not know me, Director of Facilities. So, a few of these things do fall under facilities, so security cameras, obviously. Current system, there were some blind spots, we did a big assessment, Casey was with us, three or four different weeks long. So, we found some blind spots, we found that the bandwidth was slow down, especially at the elementary school, because the server was here at the high school, so it's got a hard time keeping up. And then, obviously, the older software that we had. With those things, with the assessment, we found to add some cameras in spots that needed to be. We're also, with the Smart Schools, we're going to add a server down at the elementary, which will help with the bandwidth and, you know, keeping up with the speed down there. Then, obviously, the quality of the new enhanced cameras, the resolution really is basically, the cameras that we currently have is four or five different kinds from over the years that they had, and they, you know, put them up wherever they could when they had time. And then, obviously, just the user-friendly software. The other thing that falls under facilities here is security door access. Currently, we do have door access, that's our swipe badges that we use. There are only certain, some doors that are monitored, that's our issue that we have now. Once we continue over to the new software, which is Vigilon, which is the same exact software as our camera, they align together, we'll be adding 43 different additional doors that will be monitored. So, if a door goes off in the middle of the night, I'll get a text message, email, I'll know right away. So, that's a big upgrade for us. Phone systems, so as Cheryl was saying, our phone system is original to the building. It's still the old trunk lines that we have. This is maintained, you know, we have our old PBXs, our old servers. This will now go over to a cloud-based system with Core BTS, which will eliminate a lot of that, all that necessary things. And also, that does not align with the infu, single-wire infusion, which we will have with our new cameras and PA systems and everything else. Cable, cabling, so a lot of the cabling we have to upgrade is, you know, obviously, that's why we have slower speeds and coverage gaps. Once we do that, we'll have enhanced reliability, increased speeds, and improved coverage, obviously. Our PA systems, which also fall under facilities, if you look above you there, that's original PA system speaker. You know, it's 40 years old, you know, it probably has passed its useful life. So, that creates volume issues for us. Most of you guys know who actually work in the building, some speakers are louder than others, you know? So, with that, with new speakers we're going to put to the classroom, everything will be newer, updated, be a lot better coverage. The bigger issue with the PA systems and the clocks is the bells, the bell schedules. So, every year, our bell schedules change, whether it's by a minute, or two minutes, or a one-hour delay, or a two-hour delay. Currently, right now, we have to call service for that, the vendor has to come in, charge us prevailing wage. Once we convert over, that software will be controlled in-house, will be, you know, a big money saver for all of us.
And a lot of the pieces that Tyler had spoke about, that's all the high-tech security features.
Yep.
And that's a big component of the Smart Schools. They want to provide safety and security to schools, so that's where most of our elements are, except for the wireless, the school.
Yep. So, this next slide, especially the board is familiar with this, you've seen this before. So, this was phase one, 2023, 2024, with the funds that we had, this is where we started the conversion. So, we converted the software and the server over with all the cameras that we had. We had to ingest some more money into the licenses, there was a bunch of cameras that didn't have licenses, which was out of compliant. Once we did that, you know, we kind of ate up the funds that we had, but we were able to create some new cameras here, there's especially down the paddock place, you know, some outdoor cameras that had no coverage, we have coverage there now. The, some more high traffic areas, which were the cafeteria, the high school, and the main hallway. So, that was big for that. The picture that you see there is really the big safety concern that I had here in the district. The junior and senior high, we didn't lock the front doors, which was, you know, just really unheard of. So, once we added a camera out there, we allowed the greeters that we have in the junior and senior high to have access to that camera, and, you know, if somebody comes up to the door and rings the doorbell, they can not only see the person ahead of time and able to unlock the door. We also added swipes there as well, so it didn't create congestion with the employees that are working. Okay, so phase two, this is what will be eaten up by the Smart Bond. Obviously, you know, with the assessments that we did with Casey and Day Automations and his team, there'll be 58 new cameras added, there'll be 113 that are current that will be replaced, and then, obviously, that new server that I was talking about down at the elementary, which will help with the bandwidth. The access controls, which is the door, we're going to create the, we'll purchase the server, which will create everything over to that server. Then, there'll be licenses that we have to ingest for the 53 doors that we have on it. There'll be three new access control doors, which is swipes, it'll be three new doors that get swipes. And then, the 43 new monitor doors will also go onto that software, which will be able to give us, you know, the notification, email, or text message, you know, if a door is ajar, or anything along that nature. And I'll introduce Joe Chicorelli to start with the next couple slides, you ready?
So, I guess I'm representing the cabler here. So, not the cabler, Joe Chicorelli, Core BTS now, actually formerly, formerly, I'm sorry, I should say now officially NRI, but you've probably seen that in my letterhead, we can talk about that later. So, yeah, so structured cabling is a big part of what the district needed to do to support the devices up there, as you can see, the new Cisco IP phones, the Meraki wireless access points, teacher computer, and a PA clock speaker, so we'll see these devices in the classrooms. The important part here, I think especially, was at the elementary school, where we really had some lacking cable. I think we were looking at just an AP in the hallway on either end, perhaps, and we're going to make sure we get the ubiquitous coverage that, you know, the district needs. So, what we really want to do, the common theme here was to make sure that wherever you went within the district, you had the same experience. And, of course, that costs money, right? To do that, to make sure that everyone has, you know, the same level of technology, really, the Smart Schools is going to get us most of the way there, so. Okay, so, really, the components are about 380 new drops, new patch panels, J-hooks in the hallways, and metal raceways in the classrooms. Pretty technical cabling stuff that is probably not key to this conversation. Okay, so Cisco WebEx calling, this is basically the cloud-based calling platform that Tyler mentioned. It's going to replace your old antiquated phone system. The nice thing that this is going to do is kind of take some costs that were unknown and make them more predictable. So, the nice thing about the Smart Schools Bond is we were able to get the cost for this system in for the next three years. So, after year three, we'll have some additional costs, and I think those slides are coming up later. But again, the funding and the bond was able to carry us for the next three years. I won't go over each one of these, but the new system addresses a lot of state and federal mandates for how you respond to 911 and emergency calls, as well as things like business texting, so that'll allow you, I think, to remove an existing expense. So, again, rolling some different applications into one, okay? Nice, by the way, soft phone on the bottom left, which is nice, for some of the administrators, you'll actually be able to use your desk phone features right on your soft phone. All right, just some of the components you're going to see, you'll end up seeing some of these in classrooms and on your desks and conference rooms, just some of the handsets you'll see. All right, so the wireless, as Cheryl said, the wireless here, it's older, it's antiquated. Soon, some of the components will start to be unsupported, if you will, meaning the manufacturer will just drop all support for things, and, you know, stop making security updates, things like that, so now is certainly the time to address it. Again, with a common theme of pushing things to the cloud, your controllers that are in-house now will now move to the cloud. The nice thing about that is, again, it's a controlled cost, and it's not, you know, three years from now, you're getting a big forklift upgrade of equipment and having to come up with a large dollar amount to get your wireless operational again. Really reduces time to repair, and also allows you to get the latest upgrades from the manufacturers immediately, without having to call your vendor back in to do major upgrades. So, again, access point, not really anything exciting to talk about, we walk by them all the time in the hallway, it's a square white box. You'll see more of them, hopefully, and they'll, again, provide more dense coverage, so when you have many users in a room, you won't see, you know, a decrease of speed, you won't see people dropping off, you know, we're only going to see more and more things connecting wirelessly. So, now, again, is the time to really make this a robust solution. And again, public address clock, Tyler talked about this. You know, we heard complaints walking around the district of, you know, either dead zones or low volume, or whatever it was. You know, between the phone system and this system right here, the clock PA, these are your two main safety components in the district. If these don't work, these are real health and safety issues, right? So, we have to address the clock and PA. The nice thing is, we're going to tie them in, so instead of a single clock unit, you'll have a clock and PA in one unit. It'll be able to provide strobe lighting in the event of an emergency, it'll be able to scroll messages, either silent or, you know, audible messages. It'll all tie in with the single-wire fusion software we talked about earlier. Again, the bell schedule, it's going to be a nice, easy system for administrators to use, anywhere, anytime. Again, right from their phones, making changes if they need to. And these are just some of the components you'll see. Again, this is more of a hallway unit right here, so it's like a banner, it's double-sided. This would be something you'd see in an office or a classroom. And that's pretty much it. I think you want to talk about some of the costs, right?
Thank you, sure. No, you're fine, thank you. Okay. So, the first thing for the wireless upgrade for school connectivity, this is the allocation right now for the cost of what it'll cost. And the recurring cost, again, as Joe had mentioned, it's not next year, it's actually in year three, year four, five, and six, the district would allocate $52,000, that will last for three years. We have costs now, but that's how it's braced out, and we can put it in our Smart Bond, so for the next three years, we have no cost, but eventually, we will have a cost, and that will be for three years. All right.
Okay, same thing, that's okay, same thing, security cameras. You know, the big hit is to, obviously, put all the additions in and tie the server in at 619,000. The firmware, so there's no cost on a regular basis. The firmware would be, they recommend every three to five years, it comes out to be 25, you know, possibly $30 a camera. But, like, again, there's no cost on a regular basis. Security door access, 100,000, you see there for the implement of it, and then, no cost on an annual basis. Our phone system, so to get everything installed here, it looks like 235,000. There'll be 32,000 after year three, which would be, you know, four, five, and six. For the licensing, 9,000, for the maintenance, that's for your handsets, and then, $600 for a maintenance required in year four. The 9,000 out is year two, that goes, that starts in year two. That's, that's the. So, it's for the warranty?
Yeah. It's for advanced.
Very good.
You can easily spare some and eliminate that.
Yeah, good. Cabling is just, you know, it's just a big hit at first, once we put the cabling in. And that was a big thing when we walked around, did the assessment, you know, we wanted, like Joe said, we wanted it to be the same at the elementary school, if you were in a classroom there, or if you were in a classroom here at the high school, we wanted, you know, those four drops to be everywhere.
For you advance. So, as we know, prices can change, right? So, we want to point that out, too, that once we're approved, prices could slightly change. And then, we would go back and look at everything and modify if we needed to. We also have E-rate monies, so the prices would could go slightly high, because, you know, between what's going on with tariffs and different things like that, it's hard to say, but it's something to keep in mind, that the prices could slightly change. And also, the models of what we spec out, what we've specked out, they can change as well. So, that's why we put that there, that they're subject to change. And then, in that Smart Schools Investment Plan... And then in that smart school investment plan that I showed you earlier, there's a link in there that details how many wireless access points, how many routers, how many cameras. So if anyone's interested, that's all, how many phone systems, that's all in there.
So the PA systems and clocks, uh, looks like two hundred, two thousand to, to get it kicked off. And the, the recurring costs are nineteen thousand for the single wire licensing, that also starts year four, five and six. Uh, and then eleven thousand dollars to be in the E nine-one-one compliance. Um, that also is recurs in year four.
All right.
So Tyler, can you just, um, let everybody, can you, like, tell them how expensive our current phone system is?
Uh, I think, believe we took the one slide out, right? You did. Um, it was fifty-eight thousand dollars right now currently for our, every year for our phone system that we have under Carousel. And that's, that's, and, and a, a lot of that, and why it's so expensive is because of the servers and the PBXs and everything that continues to allow that system to run is older than I am.
And at the time, of course, it was state of art. But now, when Tyler has to call in someone to change voicemail or things like that, there's always a charge, constantly charged.
Right, so the, so the fif- fifty-eight thousand compared to thirty-two and nine, you know, forty-one thousand dollars was obviously a savings, and these don't start until year four.
So just to like build off of that for a second, right? Just to confirm, the one million, seven hundred thousand and change is all paid for by the bond, right? So when we're looking at these expenses, none of that comes out of our budget.
That's correct.
And then you had, you had said, the first time that you presented on this, that this would be a net savings moving forward with these costs that do start in year four. Um, and it sounds like that's still the case, but I wonder if we could like quantify that so we know what, you know, as we're looking at a budget that we, huh, cross our fingers in a little bit here, but like, as we're thinking about ways to like cut costs in various places, I think it would be great to like quantify where we are able to save some money here.
Yep, absolutely, we could share that with you for sure.
Yeah, and as we move forward and when we write our new technology plan, there'll be a cost, there'll be a budget in there that will say this is the replacement of the devices, the Chromebooks, whatever, what it costs. This is in year one, this is in year three, so that, you know, the superintendent and the board have that, and Christie have that information.
Okay, so a little bit about the timeline. So, um, we submitted the letter to State Ed saying we were interested, and they provided us a project number. Then we entered the information into the portal. Right now it's a draft, it's not submitted. Um, in thirty days, we're gonna post everything on the website, and in thirty days, during the thirty-day timeframe, people can respond to this email if they have any questions. The email goes to myself, Tyler, Dr. Penneyman and Christie, and we would address it if there's any questions they had. And then after thirty days, we would have a public hearing. And we would talk about if there were any questions or emails that came up, we'd address the plan. And then if the board chooses to do so, they, we can, um, accept a resolution. And then if it's accepted, you know, if you vote on a resolution, then the next day, I would submit it, or that evening, to Dr. Penneyman, who then would submit it up to State Ed. So that's the whole process, so that everyone knows that they still have discussion, involvement. We can make changes, 'cause everything is a draft right now. And then on this slideshow, this just kinda tells you, all these are links. This is like the process, once it goes to State Ed, what happens, so if anyone's interested in that, you know. It takes, it really does, six months to a year, you know. Well, they'll be reviewing over the summer, maybe we'll luck out. But having done this before, they do pick, which is okay, that's their job. They do look and they'll say, oh, we need more information on this, or we need more information on that. And that's normal, so we're expecting it. We'll get a bounce back, Dr. Penneyman and I, we'll get an email, we'll go in, we'll see what we need to tweak, we'll tweak it, submit it again. So that's the whole process. And then once it is submitted and approved and State Ed approves it, the district gets a letter, and then we can start purchasing, we'll have to budget for that, and then you get reimbursed. So that'll be, could be six, well, it won't be this budget year, it'll probably be the next. But just so that everyone has an idea of the process. Okay? And then, again, I know I thanked everybody, but we really are appreciative that everybody's involved in this, it's been a while. And again, we just wanna shout everybody out. And then do you have any questions for us, for the team? And thank you. Yes?
I just wanted to know how big the, uh, hallway units for the PA and, uh...
How big they are?
Yeah, how big they are.
The PA system. Are they about the size of a laptop, a Chromebook?
That, that works, that works. Okay, thank you, I was wondering for like, yeah, I was wondering for like visibility, like how big the text is, or like, I'm assuming there's gonna be like quite a few of them in the hall, I didn't look at the number. You said there was a, a website or a page that had the numbers of units and stuff?
Yes. It'll be on the district website tomorrow, I think we'll post it, it's the next day. It'll be on the technology, it'll be a note that says it, and he'll probably send out a link saying you could look on the website with that information.
Yeah, I was just curious about the, how readable the text was and if they were...
Yeah, very readable, typically they're, when it, the end of each hall.
Okay, okay, oh, okay. All right, cool, thank you.
Any other questions?
So is the comment period opening today, or is it gonna be at the next board meeting?
It's, the comment period starts tomorrow, you know, the third, next thirty, I mean, they can email us tonight, you know, the next thirty days. Does that answer the question?
Yeah.
Yep.
Do you know if there's supposed to be a resolution to open it?
Uh, not to open it, but to, at the end, to accept the bond.
Okay.
But we could surely look into that if you, if something has changed, not to our knowledge, but...
And so this would be, we'd be looking at new phones and, and signs in the twenty-six, twenty-seven of school year?
Yes, if the, you know, the board chooses to do so. We may get awarded that, but we may say we don't wanna spend it till the next year.
But then you deal with cost.
Right, yeah. Um, it's, yes, I just say that it's the board's decision where, what they wanna do.
Oh, I'm also assuming there's gonna be a bit of an adjustment period for staff and, and people who are using this technology? Is there like, any sort of, no information, but also is, uh, I mean, are the companies on call? Like, is that, like, if there's problems arise or stuff like that? Yeah, yeah.
Yes. There, they are, it's, it's built in. And they, it would really be like Tyler and I, depending on what the technology issue was, we would try to handle it here first, and if we needed to, we'd reach out to the company.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, so all this information will be on the website, and anyone can respond and ask questions. And if we do find anything else, we'll let you know. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
There's no need for our early executive session.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen.
So I make a motion to present consistent items, A one through three, B one through five.
Second.
Call in favor?
Personnel. This is personnel.
Yeah, personnel items. Old business.
Wait, you seconded the cabling?
Yeah, cabling.
Yeah, yeah, sec-, uh, officially seconded?
All in favor?
So I think I talked about most of the things in old business, right? 'Cause it's just the, the second read of the policies, but we made some changes to everything except for the ex officio student member, um, which is updated to accurately reflect the language around the student council member being who serves. So that is, um, that is corrected, so that one is good to go, and the other ones we should wait on.
So make a motion to accept, uh, to adopt policy twenty-two forty-five, ex officio student member of the board.
Second.
All in favor?
Yep.
We're, we're tabling the other ones, so that, all right.
Okay. Uh-huh. Okay. Uh-huh. Uh-huh. Okay, so we won't, um, we won't take those. Okay, so, that one. Or... Okay. Okay. Uh-huh. Okay. Uh-huh. Cheryl, can you put the sheet up?
Sure. My computer's connected, uh, connected.
I have to wait on the candidates until all of them call in.
Okay.
Okay.
So we keep going in the meantime?
Yeah, yep.
And you guys can keep going while I'm on the phone?
Well, it's up to public forums, so...
That's why I asked, was there anyone from public forum?
Oh, um, Joe?
Well?
Is it, did you sign up for the first one?
I, yes, I did.
Okay.
Can you just kinda say that I enjoyed your, what is that, that you guys did?
Smart tools?
Smart tools, yeah. Very informative and everything else. And I just wanted to say, um, happy to meet, uh, some new people here, like our superintendent especially. And, um, and also some old friends, uh, meaning, um, I go way back with, um, Miss Walker and Miss... And, uh, the focus, uh, Miss Walker and Deuce over there. I, uh, um, haven't been here to board meetings in quite some time, haven't even been on school property for quite... But anyway, I'm glad to finally see some of the old, some of the faces, familiar faces, I had to correct that. And, um, and also, I, um, just wanted to say, I went to the, one of the concerts there with the junior high students. Okay, and I enjoyed that, a little bit better than your, uh... They're very talented, and I loved their musical numbers and everything else. But anyway, and good luck to the candidates, Diana Dodo and Mike Sambella. And, uh, excuse me, and I really appreciate just being here tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The first, um, item up on the superintendent's report tonight is, we have three board members who receive recognition, certificates of recognition from NISBA. So I'm going to read the letters that were sent from NISBA. And then, as I call your name, I'd like for each board member to come up and receive your certificate. First, we have Ms. Lakir Walker. Dear Ms. Walker, I would like to congratulate you for earning Level Two Board Excellence Award on the NISBA's Board Excellence Recognition Program. At this level, you qualify for recognition in our onboard news, newspaper as well as a certificate of recognition. The program is designed to acknowledge school board members who strive to continually expand their governance, knowledge and skills. It is comprised of four achievement levels that are reached by accumulating points for participating in NISBA's trainings, workshops and events and activities, as well as for taking on board-related roles such as board president and NISBA advocacy liaison. Please note, the annual cutoff date for the point of accumulation is March thirty-first. And so if you'd like to learn more about the Board Recognition Program, uh, you can always go to the NISBA website, www.nisba.org/RecognitionProgram. Again, congratulations on your achievement, and thank you for your service. And this letter comes from Patrick Longo, who is Member Relations and Engagement Manager for NISBA. At the end, I'd like to, for someone to, Ms. Rabines, can you take a picture of all the board members? Thank you. Next, we have Mr. Calvin Lewis. Dear Mr. Lewis, I would like to congratulate you for earning Level One Board Achievement Award on the NISBA's Board Excellence Recognition Program. At this level, you qualify for a certificate of recognition. This program is designed to acknowledge school board members who strive to continually expand their governance, knowledge and skills. It is comprised of four achievement levels that are reached by accumulating points for participating in NISBA's trainings, workshop, events and activities, as well as for taking on board-related roles such as board president and NISBA's advocacy liaison. So Mr. Lewis also earned, uh, he earned a Level One Board Achievement Award certificate. And next, we have Mr. Macara. Mr. Macara? Dear Mr. Macara, earned a certificate. And the letter reads, dear Mr. Macara, I would like to congratulate you for earning a Level One Board Achievement Award on the NISBA's Board Excellence Recognition Program. At this level, you qualify for a certificate of recognition. And this program is designed to acknowledge school board members who strive to continually expand their governance, knowledge and skills. It is, it is comprised of four achievement levels that are reached by accumulating points for participating in NISBA trainings, workshops, events and activities, as well as for taking on board-related roles such as board president and NISBA's advocacy liaison. So Mr. Macara Earls also earned a Level One certificate from NISBA, so congratulations. And if all three board members would just like to stand here with your certificate, then Ms. Rabines can get a picture of you with, um, Ms., um, Ms. Jones and Mr. Depes, Board President, Vice President. Thank you. Yes. So tonight, I'd like to acknowledge our student representative, Mr. Abansky, Thomas Abansky. Um, so he was able to participate in the thirtieth year of the Newer Wave Music Scholarship Competition. So he participated and competed against eight other high school students. And Thomas was able to earn three thousand, five hundred dollar scholarships for his outstanding musical solo performance. And this was held on May eighteenth at the Spencer Town Academy Arts Center. And this is the first... And this is the first year that a Hudson Senior High student participated in the competition. So job well done and congratulations.
Sorry, sorry, if I could, if I could add something real quick, I don't wanna to my own horn too bad, but, um, this is also
No pun intended.
No, oh, actually, yeah, no pun intended. But, um, this is also the first time a saxophonist has placed in the top three. Um, there have been representatives from almost every other woodwind instrument, but this is the first time a saxophonist has made the, the history. And, um, I'd like to thank Mr. Yule Wade, he's very kind, so, thank you.
Congrats. So just a little bit about what's been happening around the district. So last year, we earned a bike grant. So we earned a bike grant from Riding for Focus. So you'll be hearing a little bit more at the end of the year, just how it culminated this year. But if you drive by or around the community in the mornings, uh, after seven, you'll see a lot of our students with Mr. Ott riding the bikes. So the curriculum started, and it's only at the junior high and it started this year. So we were very fortunate to write this grant last year for Ride to Focus. And then Mr. Ott and Mr. Beer, um, actually leads this process. But it's really neat to see, and we, I can, cannot just give credit to our district only. Berkshire Bank, one of our community partners, went in, um, with us on the grant. And they put all of the bikes together for us and we did, um, recognize them earlier this year. So it's been great for our students, they're really enjoying this. Just a few reminders, our Memorial Day is next week, but we also have our Give Back Day holiday breaks. So there'll be no school May twenty second through May twenty eighth. Wanna continue to stress that we have slots for our pre-K program, we have slots open, so please register for pre-K. And then I wanna continue to, um, focus on our district and building calendars. Those can be found on our district website, lots of information. So I was, as usual, I'm out and about, a very visible superintendent in the community and in the schools. So I was able to go to Ms. Hart's room last week to watch and her students write. And I tell you, it was really a remarkable experience just watching the students. They had pieces where it showed where they started out at the beginning of the year writing and how advanced they are by this time of the year. And one thing I think that's really important is Ms. Hart's students are, will be going over to ninth grade, 'cause these are the eighth grade students. But if we could just use those pieces, transition and transfer them for ninth grade, it would be a grace, great baseline for the high school ELA teachers or just all teachers to see their writing from that point. And I truly enjoyed seeing the writing. I read some of their writing and I was able to tell them, listen, later on, if, wherever you decide to go to community college, four-year college, the hooks that were in the, the introductory paragraph, some of them wrote about spirit, a spirited animal in them. And I said, these are the kinda essays that if you, you keep your essay and expound upon it later on, it would be a great essay to submit for a college entrance. They were very, very interested, so it was great. I also went to the multicultural festival. And yes, Dr. Courtright Torres and I were those, one of the two staff members who did join in a Bad Bunny dance, so it was good. A dance to a Latinx, a dance to a Bad Bunny song, it was really neat, so, we did participate. And then, um, the fifth grade spring con- uh, concert was great at MCSS last week that I attended. And now we'll have our department updates, um, starting with, um, our Executive Director of Teaching and Learning, Dr. KT, followed by Ms. Ferry, Executive Director of Business and Finance, then our Manager of Instructional Technology, Ms. Rubenius, and last but not least, Human Resources Director, Ms. Brooks.
Good evening, everyone. In the Department of Teaching and Learning, we've been quite busy, as you could all imagine, um, concluding our, um, computer-based testing, uh, New York State assessments testing, and without a glitch, thank goodness.
And yes.
Thank you, the Technology Department, for all of the hard work and everybody working together was really a remarkable experience. Um, we didn't have any glitches or anything like that, um, so it was really, it really went smoothly. So thank you, Ms. Rubenius, for all the work that you have done with your team as well to support us in the Department of Teaching and Learning. Um, we have also been preparing for summer school, our Summer Scholars Program. And today, we had a faculty meeting, our first faculty meeting, for the Summer Scholars Program. And, um, parents should have, um, received notices if your child was recommended for the program today. And, um, we need confirmations that you're coming. So that will be really helpful for all of us to plan ahead, um, and also allow, you know, as many students as possible to participate. Um, we are also, um, training our teachers and making sure that our teachers in the program are well-versed in the, um, partnership that we have with the National Summer School Institute and initiative, sorry. And, um, basically, they will be training our teachers on the flow of the lesson, what kinds of expectations are there for, um, the teacher to provide instruction during the summer time that students are here. Um, we are also reviewing summer curriculum writing proposals. Um, several teachers have taken the opportunity to fill out proposals to begin some summer writing for the summer, so I'll be reviewing some of those. And plans are in the work, um, in the works for, um, having, um, more training for MTSS. As we continue on this, um, goal of the district, uh, we had, um, a visit from Letitia Cole yesterday and today from Branching Minds. And she was able to observe an actual MTSS meeting take place at the elementary school and one that took place at the junior high school. And then she provided feedback, um, to the leaders of the school and the members of the team. So based on her feedback and analysis, we are going to plan ahead and make sure that we implement MTSS next year with fidelity and that, you know, we, um, continue to expand it to the high school. And I think that's about it for us, um, in the Teaching and Learning Department. As always, we are conducting observations and post-observations and making sure that all of those are taken care and get done by the end of the school year. Thank you.
Good evening. Um, so in the business office, I'm continuing with my ninety day, um, entry planned. And I'm on, um, my second, kinda, I finished my days one through thirty and now I'm in thirty through sixty. And I've started to review our financial da- data and systems. Um, I've really started working on a resource allocation review and analyzing our current budget, revenue streams, expenditures, and funding sources. Reviewing, um, started diving into some financial policies, presented the first one to the policy committee this evening and looking at procedures and internal controls. I'm also working on, um, actually completing the corrective action plans that have been prepared for our, um, audits. In addition, working through our grants, assessing compliance with state and federal, um, regulations. And including, uh, just starting to engage more with the community, attending community forums and events to better understand stakeholder concerns and priorities. Uh, there were several, um, budget community presentations at a local library and the firehouse. And I also attended the Student Council, Meet the Candidate Night. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, does it reach? Okay. Sorry, I'm gonna come closer, I'll talk loud. All right, thank you. Um, so, uh, Mr. Lewis had mentioned, um, technology met with, uh, the performance contract staff people, uh, Johnson Controls. And we met with them and we went over two products, uh, the BERT Tech Guide and WakeSmart. And, uh, they discussed what it would mean for the district, Tyler was there as well. And what the next phase is where we are now is we're gonna provide them an inventory of all our equipment that we have in the district. And then they're gonna do an assessment so that you have a base if you decide to move forward with where we are regarding equipment and, uh, using this, this product. So that was very exciting. The next thing is, uh, as you may be aware, we have the student tech crew. We have students who work with us and during the school year and they get credit. Mrs. Bender is their advisor and Mr. Lynch and the IT department. And in the summer, uh, they have the opportunity to apply for a position and then work with us full-time doing all, or most of all, the work that the IT department does. A big part of their job in the summer is the Chromebooks. Bringing them in, repairing them, cleaning them, labeling them, cleaning the cases, all those sorts of things. And plus, anything else that we would do in the summer, they would be involved in to a degree. You know, they wouldn't be installing because they wouldn't have passwords and so forth. But we keep them very busy and we have students who have come back each year. And we actually go through an interview process. So it's not automatic that because you're, you know, part of the tech crew that you can get in. And sometimes, even though the students in the tech crew have had, uh, experience and have had their technology, their DEL certification, that isn't a requirement. It's helpful if they have it, but we have hired students who don't have that, and that's okay, who aren't in the student tech crew, but really have a true desire to work with us. Um, so that will be taking place, the interviews, the first week of June and looking to start July first. Then the other thing, the Technology Committee, which is comprised of students and staff and board, uh, community members and so forth, have been looking at technology policies and also looking at developing an AI plan. So that information will be coming forward to Dr. Pennyman and the Policy Committee to look at just some of our recommendations. And, uh, if you need me, I'll be at that meeting as well to speak through it. Uh, and then, lastly, was the Smart Schools Investment Plan, which, you know, I know I've thanked everybody, but it really was a collaborative effort and we really appreciate it and our fingers are crossed. Um, and you know, we'll wait to hear. And then I said that was last, but also what Dr. Courtright and my colleagues up here say, we're also finishing, uh, observations of teachers at the end of the year. So that's pretty exciting, 'cause we get to be into the classrooms, which we don't get to do every single day, so that's nice. So thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone, my name is Shante Brooks, I'm the Executive Director of Human Resources. Um, the HR team attended the School Front Forum about a week and a half ago at the Capital Region BOCs alongside, uh, representatives from over twenty-five other districts in the Capital Region. Um, during the event, we learned about upcoming changes to the software, to various supports that are available. It was a valuable opportunity and learning for the entire team that I took. Um, that's included Ms. Nobelin and Ms. Gaffney for collaboration and relationship building. And we engaged in a lot of conversations with the other experienced districts with the same software and meaningful insights that can help shape our goals here for the district. So we built a lot of relationships and we're in like a network now, so we get to kinda speak to other districts about what's the upcoming, what didn't work, what did work, and that's really gonna help us and shape us here in the district. Um, also, we are also in the process of collaborating and reviewing our end-of-the-year rollover cleanup, um, assessments that was conducted in October. So we're really reviewing and really guidelineing so that we know exactly what to expect for the summer, getting ready for the super tennis conference day and revamping the new year, um, coming up, because there's a lot of things that need to go over with the staff and faculty to make them aware, to make them have, to allow them to have access. Um, school front is something that we are really driven by. Um, if you know, school front's connected to recruit front, which also talks to Wincap, so it's a lot of network things that I think it can benefit the staff and the community to have trainings and have options to be able to go in and kinda review some very important things throughout the school year. Um, as my colleagues have said, during this time, we're tasked with many evaluations. I mean, evaluations, observations, labor relation meetings, staff meetings. Um, so it's a lot of collaborating with all my colleagues as well as, um, the administrators in the buildings, is getting into the buildings, really seeing and really talking to people and having an idea about what they expect and moving forward. Um, I will say, the final thing is that my HR huddles are really productive. Uh, people are really starting to feel comfortable enough to come in, have a conversation. They don't have to make an appointment, they don't have to go through district office. They just kinda come in and pop in, nothing private is talked about there. They may have questions about enrollment, about FMLA, about anything that they really don't wanna put in the email and wanna put a face to it. So I think it's very productive and I look forward to expanding it, uh, next year as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, this takes care of my superintendent report for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
May I make a motion to accept consistent items? Eighteen down.
Second.
All in favor? Last, anyone else came up, right? Okay, important dates. Policy Committee meeting, June tenth, two thousand twenty-five, five to five forty-five, in the high school library. Board of Education meeting, Tuesday, June tenth, two thousand twenty-five, six P M, in auditorium, high school auditorium. Facility Committee meeting, Tuesday, June tenth, two thousand twenty-five, four to five P M, in the district conference room. Policy Committee meeting, Tuesday, June twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-five, five to five forty-five, in the high school library. Board of Education meeting, Tuesday, June twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-five, at six P M, in the high school library. Yeah. We don't need no executive session right now. Do I do this or base it less?
Yeah, you make the motions.
Okay, I make a motion to postpone the meeting at nine oh six.
Second.
All in favor?
Thank you.
I make a motion to resume the meeting at 11:06 PM.
Second.
All in favor?
Enthusiastic yes.
Hold on, so we're resuming?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, great.
Make a motion to accept board member election results as follows. Board member number one, Diana Dodo Howard.
We have to go with...oh, never mind.
Five hundred seventy-seven votes. Board member number two, Maureen Sheridan, five hundred fifteen votes. Board member number three, Mark DePace, four hundred seventy-one votes.
Second.
All in favor? Therefore Proposition One has passed. Make a motion to accept bond resolution results. Six hundred twenty-three yes, three hundred no.
Second.
All in favor? Therefore Proposition Two has passed. And make a motion to accept the results of the energy performance contract. Seven hundred thirty yes, two hundred four no.
Second.
All in favor? Therefore Proposition Three has passed. Make a motion to adjourn the meeting at 11:08 PM.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you everybody for your patience. Thank you Leslie, we appreciate all your work.
Thank you Leslie.
Thanks Leslie.